We'll call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's about one in six years that we get to, or seven years that we get to pledge allegiance on Flag Day. So anyway, first, we have citizens' requests to speak. We have one request. Addison Filiotro, would you please come forward? You can stay right there. We'll move the camera. And since you're the only speaker, you have you have up to three minutes. You have no requirement to use the whole three minutes, but okay, good. Thank you.
Do you want me to say my address?
I'm sorry, I should have said it. 213 River Street Hudson, is that correct?
Yep.
All right, very good.
So my name is Addison Filiotro. About eight months ago, I came as about 25 people who are either part of the race equity coordinator for the district. And here again to request the district consider creating this position. I've had the opportunity to various roles to talk to many people in the district in their support because it's helpful to have a trained guiding force in helping students, staff, and community members with their points. But I'm fortunate enough that I have a race equity coordinator at my school and I last month was able to help have him help me approach the uncomfortable topic of the N word in a respectful and delicate way in my classroom. And this is something that I know from the several parents that I talked to in the last year is that at the high school. And I look forward to the results of the equity audit because I think it's stated in October, this will be a necessary step to making sure all students feel seen and heard.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up, we have reports. And I'll turn it over to Nick. And I'm assuming we're going in the order on the agenda unless otherwise specified, but it would say community relations first.
I believe that is the case. So I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Awesome. I'm not going to go through everything that's in this document, so I'm just going to go over pieces of it. Obviously, this past year was dedicated to COVID-19 communications and certainly the first half of the year in particular. For my department, we managed through December, all of the close contact and positive case notifications that went out to families and students. The school start time advisory committee was restarted this year as well. And that was a joint effort between learning support services, financial services, and transportation. I won't say much about that. There's a report later. As far as general communication, some of the bigger pieces, we are, we have now completed our transition with our crisis communication system. So Blackboard, we used to use Blackboard Connect. We updated the system to Blackboard Mass Communication, which allows us to more easily text families as well as it comes with an app that we haven't used yet. But would be able to connect a lot of our systems like Skyward and whatnot within that app at some point. And then this system also allows us to automate our attendance. So when, so right now, teacher or the offices all have to make those calls to families. This would automate it and families would receive a text when their student wasn't in attendance. The other piece that I think of interest is the school perceptions data that is showing not only with the website, but our communications as a whole continue to be moving in an upward trend. So that's good for us. School safety, we had several things that we needed to complete this year, including the final pieces of our grant, which that's all done, but that doesn't mean the requirements from the state go away. So we continue to meet or need to meet those requirements, including some training requirements. We continue to hold tabletop exercises within each of our schools. And we also my department, teaching and learning, finance, and IT moved forward with cybersecurity crisis planning. And IT will talk about that more. Then moving into, I'm going to just jump then to community services. I'm not going to talk much about school age care because that report will be coming at your next regular meeting. Other than to say thank you to our school age care team for working throughout COVID. And I've said this before, but I want to say it again, that this was a group of staff who continued to work face to face with kids throughout all of COVID. We did not close our services during that time. With community ed, a lot of this, we've had reports on previously. As we were looking at budgets, I'm happy to report that we are on schedule to meet the projections that we talked about back in February, January and February to end the school year in a good place or moving in toward a good place. Our participation rates, especially in community ed, continue to be about half of what we typically have, but I'm hopeful moving forward that those will strengthen as we go along and we move further out of COVID. The fitness center is doing really well. Right now, we do see a drop off, but that's summer. And so we expect that. But we're still ahead, even if you look at our summer numbers ahead of what we were when we initially opened. As far as facility scheduling, interesting, even though we were doing, we were open less, we still had about the same number of hours of our facilities used. And then if you look at revenue, we're going to end the year at a projected 133,000 in revenue. A lot of that was spring recitals, dance recitals this year. We were able to bring those back. Ryan did an awesome job. One of those groups is Larkin. And if you're familiar with Larkin Dance, they're one of the larger dance companies in the Twin Cities. They usually rent out O'Shaughnessy Auditorium. Ryan did such a good job, they want to come back next year. So that's, that's, that's good for us. And then we also are working with UW River Falls to schedule classroom space for them to use for some of their primarily business classes for next year. That's quick. But I don't know if I made my, my time, but I did two, two programs.
All right. So is that, that's two reports down? All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Otherwise, yes.
Quick question. So the chart of utilization of facilities outside of the school day. So does that include district and non-district use? Is that just kind of like outside of what, 7:00 to 5:00 PM? Or what do those numbers reflect?
Those are both our activities and community use. So community rentals. So that would include athletics or any other school sponsored activities outside the school day. So depending on the building, it's just from the end of the school day until, you know, most of our activities in around 10:00 PM. And weekends, obviously.
All right. Very good. Thank you for your reports. And now from community use of our facilities to a report about our facilities. Now it'll be Jim Stasco. Jim.
So I, my list is, you know, I've got it broken into two different categories. Top category is a very condensed assessment of the different projects that we did over the course of the last year. And you know, I'm not going to focus so much on those. You know, we, the district always focuses on trying to improve our facilities and make it a better place for the kids in our community. And I'm quite confident that we'll continue to do that moving forward in the future. And we always make a brief effort, usually get quite a bit of stuff done over the course of the year. I too am going to focus a little bit more on some of the COVID stuff that we went through because it was a really monumental task. So down on the bottom there, I listed a bunch of stuff. And quite a few of them were about obtaining different things, obtaining masks, plexiglass, antiviral disinfectants, vinyl gloves, Clorox wipes, hand sanitizers, sanitizer dispensers. And that put people, does look like such a big charge right now, sitting here today. But if you want to turn the clock back about 12 or 13 months, those were all really hot items. And they were all very, each and every one of them, very difficult to obtain. And to obtain them in volume was even more of a, just really, you know, it's fast. The other thing that you've got to remember when you're talking about obtaining those things in volume is the information that we were getting was change, was very dynamic, was changing all the time. So the decisions that we were making about how are we going to handle this? And all the time under the umbrella of we're going to we're, we are going to open on September 1st. We want the kids here. So some of these decisions to obtain these things weren't made till midsummer and some of them, particularly with plexiglass, even later than that. So the fact that we were able to like focusing on that plexiglass, obtain the amount of plexiglass that we did in the different varieties of sizes and applications that we did and get it done in a three to four week window and set up and ready for the first day of school is nothing short of miraculous. I really didn't think we were going to be able to pull it off. We did. And we were ready. Moving on with more COVID stuff, you know, we increased and maintained the fresh air supply at all district sites, which pretty challenging in the middle of winter. You know, we had a couple really cold weeks in the first part of February where we were still able to really maintain that heightened level of fresh air. And that didn't come at a short cost when it, when it comes to my being able to sleep. I can tell you that. We were, we were in a lot in making sure that stuff wasn't freezing. But what we did maintain throughout that cold snap, replacing all the district filters with higher rated filter. Also, filters were almost impossible to get. I don't know if anybody here tried to buy filters in volume, probably not, I would imagine those things that only I get to appreciate, but they're made out of the same material that masks are, N95 masks. So all the bulk raw material that was going to N95 masks, they weren't getting. So we were able to get them and get them in place. And we still have them. We continue to use them. Installing and maintaining or initiating, maintaining higher district cleaning protocols during COVID. Now, we did that on a daily basis. That was just our normal cleaning practice was this heightened level of cleaning. Then under that, we've got these 500 COVID room cleanings. That was every time that a student was sent home to assess whether they had COVID or not, we did this heightened level of cleaning. And I and Betsy put that 500 together. And I know that's short. It's probably closer to 75. Where we would go in with a group of six to eight people and wipe out every surface in the room with our antiviral dispenser. So it was a lot of extra work. We were able to get it done. And what probably makes me most proud about it is I got no pushback from my staff. They didn't push back. And this is a ton of extra work. And we did hire extra people, but, but many, many times it was just enough to keep us even if we had people and we had people that were sick. So, you know, this was, this was a lot to absorb. And we did it. And I really think we came through shiny colors. And when I was able to take my mask off and we could go Friday and walk around the building, I'm going to tell you, I was shocked at how much it smelled like disinfectant. They really smelled clean. It was amazing. I, you know, really missed that. You weren't able to smell it. It's been the first thing I noticed when I walked around. Man, it smells clean. So I'm going to keep it under four minutes. That, that was really, that's it in a nutshell. We really, you know, COVID was, was quite a challenge for us as well as everybody else. Everybody went through the COVID meat grinder. But I'm really proud of the district as a whole. We were able to, we were able to stay there. So hats off to everyone.
Okay. Well, all right. Well, just, you're not done yet. So my, all right. Is there, is there any question? Yeah, Carrie.
Well, I would just say thank you very much. But also, I would, I would guess that I'd have to speculate that this year in comparison to last would be a cakewalk. So if you wanted to just ease into retirement with more of a stress free year, I mean, I'm guessing you'd be welcomed back. So.
I don't know that my wife would go.
Yes, John, I think, thank you as well. I think you guys did a great job. And I think there's no better way to send you off to retirement than to put you through what you did the last two years. I just have a quick question. I know because I have had to source filters and more filters than normal because of the increased airflow that we put the building in. So I know we've, we put in higher merv rating filters and increased airflow is, are both of those things going to continue through the summer and into the fall or?
Well, I want to thank you for your years of service, 23 years with the district. And there's been a lot of changes with the landscape with regard to our facilities in that time. I mean, we added on to the high school, added on to the middle school, we built River Crest, we had additions along the way and upgrades at other buildings like North Hudson and Willow. And, you know, so having one building that's essentially three years old and another one that's essentially 100 years old, that's quite quite the feat to balance all of that. And I know that we still have some more fun looking forward to what we're doing with our elementary school facilities. But I know that you've earned being able to get off the merry go round at this point. So thank you very much for all your work. All right. Next up, we have nutrition services.
Okay, so I haven't done this before. Are you going to time it for me? I'm going to, I practiced it a few times.
Tim tries to use everybody else's unused company.
So I wasn't exactly sure what you guys were doing before the last time I was here. There were questions about participation. So that's really what I focused on. Who's in control of this slide? So I was able to dig into previous information from DPI and collect all of the previous years, well, not all, previous year participation numbers. So I have, oh, and I actually added a year. So if you want to go to the next one, I'm a visual person, a lot of graphs. I promise we won't linger on them too much. The blue is the 2021 school year. Red is 1920. The yellow is 1819. The green is 1718. So the reason the green and the yellow are so low is because that is only the middle and high school participating in the program those years. But you can clearly see that the blue participation from this current school year is much higher than even last year. I think a lot of that is due to our elementary schools. It's free. It's in the classroom and it's a grab and go model. We're going to continue doing that next year as well. So then for lunch, you'll see I have the, the four years again, same years, same colors. Blue is this current 2021 school year. This is a, looks like a scribble. Throughout the school year, this is total meal sold in a month. So if we're looking at that blue participation for the 2021 school year, you can see that we actually started in September, very close to the 1819 school year starting participation. We actually sold more in January than that school year. The, the red, last year it drops off in March because school closed. So it's not really fair to compare that one. But we were at a higher participation level than the 1718 school year in June as well. This year was really challenging. We had different learning models. We didn't have all of our students here every single day. That dip, that dip that you see in the blue line from November and December, we had, what was it? Just a freshman and they were in a hybrid at the high school. That's a big chunk of our customers gone. It really is. So I'm really hoping if we were looking at that March, April, May, that trend line going up. June is weird because we're still, we're still distributing. So that's a really steep decline because we haven't finished this month yet. So then looking, so that is total meals sold per month. This is an average of meals sold. And you can see that this trend line is, is positive. Again, that, that dip in December is mostly due to the middle and high school learning model changes. But overall, it's, we're trending upwards, which is really good. I have one for each school. We'll just go through really quickly. So you can kind of see how each school goes. This is Willow River. They have a really steep upward trend line. They did really well with participation constantly increasing, especially for breakfast. That really caught on at the end of the year. Holton as well, very steep upward trend line for participation. The middle school is a bit different. Learning models here play a big role. If you can imagine trying to anticipate this and plan appropriately to purchase food, to plan how much to make, it was very difficult. I think my staff handled it as well as they possibly could. But even ending, you can see once we get to January, February, we have that upward trend line still. The high school's a mess. I mean, it's just, it's all over the place. There was no anticipating anything at the high school this year. We were selling meals, not selling, giving away meals in July. So that's where that starts. That's our distribution. All of our IDL distribution meals are included in this high school. I mean, every, every peak and valley, the kids were here, they weren't here, they came back, they left. Really, really hard. But again, once we get to those last few months, we do see that participation going up and kind of starting to stabilize. And again, we're still serving meals in June. So that's a drop off. I don't have any information there. North Hudson, upward trend line. They did really well this year. Started at 150, kind of ended over 200. So that's, that's really good. EP Rock, I don't know how they were doing this, honestly. They're amazing. This, this is such a dramatic difference in participation in a really high, this is the, the highest participation per like labor hours that we had. And they handled it really, really well. And Hudson Prairie, again, upward trend line. Hope you guys are seeing the pattern here. Participation's going up. It's a really good thing. River Crest, steep trend line up, which is our last school. So overall, participation has been kind of rocky, but upward going. Okay. So then the fun stuff. Not that participation isn't fun, but I wanted to include some information about Lunchroom Hero Day and May the Fourth be with you. The picture in the center is from Rock. The lady is dressed up. This was a hard year. And so we really tried to find as much fun as we could throughout the school year. I had asked principals to ask their teachers to spare some classroom time for students to give their lunchroom service workers feedback. So they wrote a bunch of notes. I have a few of my favorite quotes. I included the spelling errors because I think they're really funny. But I'll just read them like they're supposed to be said. Thank you for the pizza because it's warm and cheesy. And if we didn't have some day, if we didn't have you, some days I wouldn't have lunch. I like it when you smile because I like when you look happy. Thank you for making great lunches. I like it when you make chocolate muffins for breakfast. Thank you for your great, great service. You cook amazing food servings. I love when you make walking tacos. I like when you cook up a smile on my face. They also started a petition to bring back butter that had a lot of signatures. At the high school, we were able to help support Susan Richards and Kristi Pitzer in throwing the senior all night party, just opening up our, our facilities and helping them, you know, get some, some food in and showing them how to work the equipment and that kind of thing. This is just, I'm not going to read it. Just a thank you note from them to Kristi, which is our high school lead. And then finally, our engagement survey. We had 31 responses out of 37. That was really good. That's most of my, my staff. And most of those responses were strongly agree, agree, and I don't know. And then this is what they thought about you guys, the board. I thought you'd want to know.
Is green good?
Yeah, green is good. Green is, green is agree. And blue is I don't know. So I think there's some opportunity for my staff to get to know you guys a little bit better, but overwhelmingly green.
All right. All right. Thank you for the report. Questions? Yes, Kate.
I just wanted to point out in those comments how the kids talk about the, them making them smile. How even in food service, you feel like you're feeling their bellies, but you're also feeling their souls each day with your staff there. So thank you. And pass that along to them.
A lot of my staff feedback too, when we were looking at them all and they were surprised. They're like, well, they can't even see my smile. I have a mask on. And just realizing how much you can see in your eyes and how they can really tell. And the voice and the way you talk when you smile. So yeah, it was, it was really nice.
Well, I thank you for your report. I like to see those trends of going up at most every school. And I know it's going to be difficult to do year over year comparison when we look at COVID's effect on the last two academic years. But you know, I know we usually get a report somewhere in mid-year and I'll be curious as we head into a normal year, what the impact was of a, was it a five cent raise or a 10 cent increase? I know we've had some sensitivity in the past to what impact that has on overall participation. So we'll be looking forward to that mid-year report as well. All right. Thank you. Next up is student services.
Yep. So Fafani Winesrell and Jordan Wood, Assistant Directors of Student Services are here. Thought this would be a good opportunity for you to hear from them as they do carry the bulk of this work that they're going to share.
I'm Fafani Winesrell. I do recognize all the faces around here, yet every time I'm in front of you guys, I do get really nervous. I don't know why. In, in March of 2020, the Minnesota Gophers head football coach PJ Fleck gave an interview. And they got to talking about the effects of the pandemic, of course. And in, in the PJ Fleck, his typical inspirational talks, he made the comment that there are no problems, only situations. And through those situations, we create opportunities. Student Services took great advantage of all the opportunities that we had this past school year. But our parent, family, and community engagement continued to be a big priority for us. We were still able to get our special education parent advisory council together four times throughout the year. And shifting to a virtual model, we used either Zoom or Google Meet, depending what our topic was. We actually saw our participation and attendance really increase with that. And at our last meeting, we kind of asked parents like, what do you think? Why did that happen? The feedback that we got was that families were able to come as you are. And they didn't have to worry about finding childcare or whatever. We did have one mom who would often participate on the Google Meet through her phone while she was taking her daughter to different like OT and PT therapy. So she was able to participate in that. That was kind of one of the silver linings, right, of COVID. And our English as a Second Language team, they typically hold several family engagement events throughout the year. Without being able to come face to face, they were still able to find ways to get their families to share about their different cultures. And that culminated in our Cooking with Culture Cookbook. If anybody's interested in a copy, let me know. I can get you this. that culminated in our Cooking with Culture Cookbook. If anybody's interested in a copy, let me know. I can get you this. But it actually is really kind of, kind of cool stuff that they put together in there.
So I'm Jordan Wood. I'm the other Assistant Director of Student Services. And just going to highlight some of our support, student support work throughout the year. Through four different instructional models, we maintain and implement our special ed, gifted and talented ESL services, which was, which no small feat. I think especially special education was, was interesting to translate to a virtual model. Some specific program highlights are Community-Based Transition Program or Eighteen to Twenty-One Year Old Program. We did have three students who participated in the WITC Hospitality Foundations Program and graduated this year. Those are first three graduates in that program. That was exciting. And all three of those gentlemen have job offers, multiple job offers from different businesses. So that's great. We appreciate the support of the community for that program. We were able to maintain that experience for those students all through the pandemic and our community partners were fantastic. We are continuing to look to increase our inclusive practices. So we maintained our co-teaching models and did a lot of legwork to increase for this upcoming school year to expand that to every level. And actually, Fafani and I have a co-teaching training on Monday with some new co-teaching pairs and we're going to get started for the fall. Another COVID silver lining is that, you know, as we translated special services to virtual environment, we also had to translate our IEP meetings. We had increased participation from our parents. Families reported that was, they didn't have to leave work or they could just pop onto the Google Meet or jump on their phone. And so that was a nice change as we increased that.
Socially emotional learning and mental health rightfully has been given a lot of attention and consideration. Resources for integrating socially emotional learning have been adapted at the elementary and high school levels. And our Mental Health Awareness Committee put together some mental health resource bags and delivered those to a thousand or delivered a thousand different bags to areas in our community as well as put together COVID care packages for those who would need them. We put together a mental health webinar series that was planned and then offered this spring. And then also there was the Community Wide Unlock It Family Event at Camp St. Croix. We had over fifty people attend that. So just some really great ways that we're still trying to get that word out, that message out.
We also kept on with our professional learning and training of our staff. We did self-care professional development opportunity for all staff across the district, both certified and support staff. Fafani and I did some professional training for our professionals on behavior tools and increasing student independence to better the outcomes of students, but also prepare staff to work in struggling, hard situations. As a team, our rigor teamwork and inclusion team continues to do our UDL book study just to increase outcomes for all students through accessible instruction and activities. And then I want to highlight our health services, our district nurses, Sarah Felon and Lisa Kane did a fantastic job creating protocols, processes, tracking and monitoring COVID symptoms. Serving as liaisons between the county and the Department of Health and then just working with parents and families and staff. And on top of all of that, still maintained a really consistent high level of service in our health offices for all our students and staff. The other thing they, they did, they kind of took on a project with the cooperation of IT and transportation and we streamlined and connected our two student information systems. So the health information feeds directly into, from Skyward to TransferSop. So drivers have that on the tablets, can see their student health information and have that. So just streaming out these processes that really turn out.
Questions from board members? Yes, Molly?
I just want to say, I really appreciate how the mental health care is extended to the staff because if we have mentally healthy staff, we are better likely or more likely, better likely go back to school. We're more likely to have mentally healthy children and I just so appreciate that. And I also really love how the such a tough year can improve how we do things. And having the silver linings, I appreciate that. And how we're able to access so many more people and they can, they don't actually have to physically show up, but they can still learn. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you for your report. And thanks for the good work you do. I know we're all looking forward to, again, a normal year and this Sterns, I know Student Services was one that was really taxed extra special hard, but going into instructional technology, another area where I think we learned a lot of things this year.
All right. Hi, everyone. Super excited to be here. I can't believe that we are actually sitting here face to face after what was the longest eighteen month year that we've ever had. I would be remiss if I didn't start by talking about the power of our team. This year was unlike any other. Our instructional technology team really expanded to include Ryan, our transition crew, which is from the Eighteen to Twenty-One Program. Without these two groups of people joining our team, we would have really struggled to make it through the year between all of the devices that were coming and going. Five hundred webcams streaming every class lesson to our friends at home. It was a really tech-heavy year. So without these folks, we would, we would have had a definite struggle. So a big thanks to not only our technology team, the transition team and to Ryan for joining us this year. So with that, we'll get started. Our technology team really came together this year. Starting in March of 2020, we met every single day for about ten to fifteen minutes just to check in and talk about what was going on that day because every single day, life would change as we knew it and Google would release a new feature or this would crash or this wouldn't work because the technology was so rapidly evolving to meet the needs of distance learning, face-to-face learning, all of the things that, that really needed that attention in ways that we never had before. So with that being said, we offered professional learning for staff. Whereas before, technology would often live in its own little box of being separate. What COVID really allowed us to do was the technology now supports instruction. It's not something separate. It's not we're doing this project with technology to use technology. It's technology is supporting and enhancing the classroom experience. So we're seeing a lot of that universal those universal design strategies built right into teaching and learning for students, which is really exciting. New ways of engaging students that we're really excited to continue on moving forward. We also increased our clientele this year, starting in March of 2020, where we were so comfortable supporting our classrooms, our teachers, our support staff, our administrative staff, you name it. We now expanded to about fifty-six hundred families between March of 2020 and now. So we created a family help desk. And just in this school year alone, starting on the first day of school, we had nine hundred tickets from families and that's just in our ticket system. They also were calling very regularly. We're really glad they call because we're happy to help. And the response time on average was under one hour. So obviously, a lot of those tickets come in on the weekend when we're not around. So that kind of bumps up your response time to put it close to an hour. But typically, tickets would be responded to in under fifteen minutes. So the texts were great. Ryan also helped with that. We're really glad he really managed our family help desk, which was wonderful. In addition to working through COVID, our staff was on site pretty much every day from about mid-May until now. And we moved. So ITS used to be in the building next door and now we live at Hudson Middle School. We are really excited to be there. Our elementary technicians also moved out into their buildings. So now they office primarily at our elementary buildings and our school perceptions data really showed that that was a great decision to move them to their buildings. They're incredibly thankful to have those texts there. They're there on a schedule. And they're there every day for part of the day. So that's been really exciting and really beneficial, especially as we've had guest teachers trying to teach at a distance as well and everything that way. As Tracy mentioned, we really worked, as you know, security and cybersecurity is something that is, I'm definitely passionate about. If you want to talk about, I'm happy to talk with you about it. I could talk your ear off. But we really focused this year on developing a comprehensive cyber incident response plan. And Tracy was really great to work with through that. She really supported us on that process, process to build out what it should be. As you know, the threat landscape is huge right now. If you're sitting in this room and haven't gotten that email, Target had a breach or so-and-so had an incident. I'm very jealous of you because that is the new threat landscape and the new reality that we live in. So we really spent a lot of time not only creating that plan, but also testing that plan, running through tabletop exercises, growing as a team and working with financial services and communications and teaching and learning to really create a comprehensive plan that factors in all of these different things. We got new, we got new high school and middle school Chromebooks this year as well. So not only did we do drive-through service at our middle school and high school to collect up thirty-five hundred Chromebooks, we had to get new Chromebooks and deploy all of those. So we got those out to our students, our middle school and high school students are really excited about those devices. We also, as an IT team, like those devices. They are more durable. They have a great warranty. It's been a really great year with Chromebooks. We just collected them again a week ago. So we're just excited to keep collecting and deploying. And then on the cybersecurity front, two big things that we're going to talk about. The data looks a little bit interesting as far as our simulated phishing attacks. So as you all know, especially as board members, pretty regularly I'll see an email from a board member saying, is this real? Is it? And it's not always Jamie, but typically Jamie doesn't need any gift cards. No one needs to buy him any gift cards. He doesn't need to buy them. And so what we know is that our bad actors are getting better every single second of every single day. So what we did this year was we increased the complexity of the simulated phishing emails that we send out. And they are much harder now. So at the end of last year, we had about three percent of our staff, which is almost a thousand staff members clicking on the simulated emails. This year we have eight percent, but that's what you would hope to see, right? As we increase the complexity, we're going to see more people learning from those emails as to how to get better and be more aware. The good news about that is that we are still seeing more and more staff members every time we send an email, which is monthly, reporting those emails to us. And so if they report that email, like my preference is to just continue to see how many people report it, that number always going up, which means that we're always going in the right direction. They get a really delicious little Swedish fish with a kind thank you from the IT department. And we love that. And then last but not least, as part of our increased security, we turned on two-factor authentication. I know many of you in this room also have that turned on now for our Google accounts. So we have about a thousand staff members and across three days, all of our district technology staff supported them to turn on two-factor authentication for their Google accounts. Which basically means that if someone tries to sign into any one of our accounts from anywhere on a new device without a physical token or their cell phone, they aren't going to be able to get into our account. So we are pretty excited about that security update. And our staff handled it in stride. Everyone did such an amazing job. Not only our teachers, our support staff, our board members, our administrative staff. Everyone got through it and we're really excited to be on the other side. So with that being said, that was twenty twenty twenty-one in IT. Questions?
Questions for IT? I don't see any, but Jen, thank you for your work and thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now, we have some elementary schools. So first up is Rivercrest.
Well, hello, everybody. Happy to present for you this evening. Once a year, we get to talk about what's going on in our elementary schools. And so it was a interesting year and I have to begin by just applauding our teachers and parents and students for being ever so flexible, ever so supportive and staying focused on what our goal was, was to make authentic connections, which happens in person. So connections and relationships are what drive all of it. And so our goal this year was very clear, keep the kids in the building. And so if they said it takes Plexiglas between everybody, Plexiglas it was. Masks everywhere, masks everywhere they are. We rethought everything, how we moved through the hallways where we turned things into one-way hallways. How we went to the bathroom, the time we spent washing hands, where we washed the hands. How we got through breakfast lines, how we took recess. The amount of time or how close kids could be sitting up on the carpet next to the teachers versus out at their desks, how long we were teaching guided reading. Masks on all of the students really impacted a lot of what we did. If you think of kindergartners and first graders, where a lot of learning that sound production is looking at that mouth and having kids say, get your lips ready or get your mouth ready for those words, not being able to see the teacher's mouth and not being able to see the student's mouths. But we said, we'll keep figuring it out. So buying see-through masks at various times, trying all kinds of different models. Figuring out that you can stand next to the kids so you can hear them a little bit better. Just absolutely everything was rethought. All so we could keep the kids present because the relationships and the connections are what really make education hum and make our progress grow. So it did impact some of our, where we didn't see maybe as much growth academically for our students, but we did see growth that we're very proud of. So just over fifty percent of our students met their growth target on the MAP test. And we just slightly came under our goal for having students at the sixty-first percentile above on the NWA, which is college and career ready in our first through fifth grade. We also had a goal for student engagement in hoping to reduce repeat negative behavior. So our goal is to have students not have more than one office discipline referral. And we hit that with at eighty-eight percent of students. So which was really good. We, oh, we ended the year with ninety percent. So our goal was to go from eighty-eight percent to ninety-two percent and we hit it right in the middle at ninety percent. Again, the connections and the relationships really fueled everything. So a couple of our big highlights this year, one was learning that our school was nominated for a Blue Ribbon School nomination and reflecting on the practices that we've done in the past to really help students be successful in their growth. And again, a lot of it came back to how we're connecting with kids and really getting to know them, both as learners and little people and working with parents and working with each other because it can't be done alone. It's done together with a net of support that supports our children through their educational journey and their development in these young years. Another highlight was our PBIS team that attended a conference late summer, supported by Student Services. And really let us kind of regroup and think about how we support students in really meaningful ways. And it was two days of time that we had presenters that were really outstanding on everything from trauma-sensitive schools, social emotional learning, multi-level systems of support, equity, inclusive practices, adult resiliency, using their PBIS system and data analysis. So learning and then reflecting as a group and then really informing our next steps. And those teachers who chose to participate in that, some of the hours counted with their flexible professional development they can do. Some of them participated just because they wanted to, but those leaders really fueled a lot of our work through the year. So again, that teacher-driven dedication that helped us move forward. In addition to that, then we implemented whole school zones of regulation, which was in one of the newsletters. So thank you, Tracy, for that. And it worked with the parents as well on that. So helping students really understand how they're processing the world. Which this year, I think for staff and for students, there's so much that was unknown. Almost every week, we'd wonder, is this going to be the last week? We have students in the building. Are we going to shut down now? Kids whose parents didn't know who were, you know, do I send you to school or don't I? And parents who, and we were able to keep the doors open for this, parents that chose, I'm going to keep you home because I'm not sure if this symptom is something that's COVID-related or not. That put tons of stress on families and on staff, rethinking everything. So really keeping in touch of the zone, your emotional state at that present time and thinking about strategies and things you can do to try and help support you to be in that green zone, we call it, which is the zone where the brain is most likely to be able to absorb new learning and make good decisions. So it was really a school-wide system and adoption of strategies that were really worthwhile. So a lot of neat things. We were able to keep a lot of our neat traditions, but they looked different. So Veterans Day was all virtual. But each grade level had a veteran that connected with them and they were able to ask questions. We still had like Alicia Miller with her environmental ad, either go outside or go virtually. Mr. Mick, who's, you know, awesome, Mr. Ray, we couldn't have a school year without him involved. So some of those things were kept. We didn't have, you know, the all-school meetings and things like that. And we're really, Rivercrest is super. Rivercrest is super anxious to get back to some of those things where we're really meeting in whole group and in singing and celebrating together, but with the parameters that were given. I think a hugely successful year. So proud again of my staff, our families and our students. The resilience, the ability to pivot, the ability to rethink everything has just been inspiring. So thanks for giving us that the support to be there in person and to do what we needed. To keep our kids here because it's all about those connections and relationships. So that's my report.
Any questions from our board members? All right. Well, thank you for your report Katie and thank you for your service to our district and good luck in Chippewa Falls.
Thank you.
Right. Next up, we have Holton Elementary and I'm assuming Hudson Community 4K as well. All right.
Um, on behalf of the principal team, I wanted to say thank you to Katie for your contributions to our team as well. So you will be missed. Um, my report will start with Holton. Um, and I echo exactly what Katie said about how there was a sense of relief that we were able to be in person this year. I think we started the year with some hesitation and being very nervous about being face to face. But I think at the end of the year, there was not a single person that didn't agree that that was the best thing to do. It was a year to see people come forward with problem solving, with showing their flexibility, their county accommodating kids that were at home and trying to figure out how to have them do the same experiment at home without all the materials that they had at school. Being creative, being a huge amount of communication with families of IDL learners. Trying to be organized so that they could plan ahead and have kids participate. So it was a really tough year, but I think everyone felt like it was the right year, the right thing to do this year. By the end, I'll, I'll speak quickly about our goals. By the end of this school year, despite the challenges, we were able to have sixty-eight percent of our kids reach that college and career sixty-first percentile, just short of our goal of seventy percent, which in telling, talking to my staff at the end of the, the end of the year, I felt like that was a huge win just because of all of the things, the mitigation strategies and all the things that were put into place. Despite that, we were still able to almost reach our goal. Part of that was the success was due to our new FPC, Fountain Penel Classroom Reading Curriculum that um has been a huge uh win for the teachers. They love it and um we've seen a lot of growth and progress with our students, even with some of the mitigation strategies. We still feel like it's made a big difference with our kids. Um, in addition to that, we had to go virtual with everything, which included our data roll-throughs where we would gather teams of classroom teachers, interventionists and talk about what kids needed some additional support and then identified what that was. Still able to pull people together to do that brainstorming and problem solving so that we could identify what kids needed. Um, and due to some of that planning and close um careful watching of kids' observations and and trying different strategies. One of our goals was closing the gap and that what that means is getting our special ed students to up to grade level, reaching their goals. Um, and we did, uh, were able to dismiss two students out of special ed, which is um a pretty big accomplishment and we were very proud of that. Um, other highlights and successes, um, we started the year with twenty-three IDL students. And by the end of the year, we had five, so we convinced them to come back. Uh, no, they felt safe and I think they felt like that was what their kids needed by the end of the year was to come and join and um we would, we're a hundred percent in agreement. Over the year, we served a hundred and twenty students with um the close contacts. And so that kept teachers on their toes. Sometimes they would have students on IDL, sometimes not. Because of the challenges with the mitigation strategies, the student connections, the staff connections were sometimes difficult to maintain. And so we really tried to come up with some ways to think about that in maybe a different way, but to still continue to make sure kids were connecting. We identified students who did not have a connection with at least one staff member and paired them with staff members so that they had that um adult connection. We, um, I made a lot of positive phone calls. I rounded with a lot of staff, just giving people the opportunity to talk, to share. Um, and making sure they knew that we still wanted to meet and be face to face and and in building those relationships. We made a Holton Cookbook. Um, that was a really nice way to bring families together to um submit their recipes and then gather the recipes of everybody in our Holton family. Um, we also did a one book, one school, which again virtually brought everyone together, reading the same story. Uh, we had a virtual visit from the author. Just trying to come up with some different ways to bring kids and staff together. We adjusted some of our school traditions. Um, we were able to still do fifth grade camp as a district with one day at Camp St. Croix. Our typical all-school ice skating was um skating, roller skating with lights and disco balls and everything in the gym. We did individual grade level kite flying. Um, we did an all-school picnic over at the loop trail. We did virtual concerts that were sent home to families, a virtual talent show. We were able to do fifth grade orchestra and we did garden club with smaller groups. So overall, I feel like the school year really provided the academics, but also the social connections that kids needed and was a huge success. Um, I just have to put in our plug for next steps would be to look at Holton's space. We're a little tight. So that would be um our next steps. Any questions about Holton?
Questions at home? All right.
All right. I will move right into 4K. 4K, as you can imagine, is challenging virtually, but we were able to provide a IDL experience of fifteen to twenty minute coming into the classroom via the Google Meet to do maybe the all-school or the classroom circle meeting, the morning meeting, or sometimes they were part of the free time and kids could talk with the students. So we were able to be creative and get those kids a part of our 4K classes as well. We continued our focus on our 4K priority standards. Uh, we did professional development on those standards three times throughout the year. As well as um some inclusive practices such as UDL, trauma-informed practices and de-escalation strategies. So really trying to provide um professional development for all of our sites and all of our um 4K teachers. We had virtual data discussions where we looked at the priority standard data from each site and then as a district to see trends, to find areas that maybe we needed additional support. And then used those um discussions to determine our next steps for professional learning. Uh, we um, or I was able to provide an overview of our um 4K priority standards, kind of the process that we went through. I partnered with the coordinator of the Wisconsin Pyramid Model Consortium and we presented at the Preserving Early Childhood Conference in March. Um, as to kind of show the work that our 4K program has done. In terms of enrollment, um, we had three hundred and five students in January, which was down a little bit, but we anticipated that because of um families just not knowing and 4K not being um required. So we knew there would be a little bit of a drop with the COVID. This year, at this point, we have two hundred and thirty-six students fully registered, which is about fifty-five more than last year at this time. We anticipate at least reaching three hundred by the end of the summer. A lot of families daily, I'm getting their, their Skyward registrations coming through. So it's ongoing. Uh, we had thirty students that were open enrolled and we currently, last year, we currently have twenty-three approved. We have with nine of last year's coming into the district. So we're holding or capturing about a third of those that are open and rolled into 4K. We have sixteen students that will repeating, which is down three from the previous year. And we are adding the tools to school sites, EP Rock and North Hudson, which will give us three school sites and nine community partner sites. Despite challenges, we were able to deliver IDL instruction um with the support of my 4K secretary Kelly Schickling and two 4K teachers. Melissa Breezy and Heather Sundberg, they were able, we were able to put together 4K instruction to send home with monthly information to include a learning menu, family activities and an assessment kit. Family resources built on our essential standards, um, sent to families so that they could participate at home. We sent home assessment toolkits for families to use and send back information on things that teachers couldn't assess without being right next to the child. They also did a lot of assessment via the Google Meet and so very, very creative. We had twenty-three students start the year on IDL with 4K and thirteen ended. And over the course of the year, we offered IDL instruction to ninety-eight students that were out for close contacts or what have you. Um, and finally, we did a 4K showcase video. We had a lot of questions about what is the Hudson 4K program alike? What is it like? What kinds of things do you do? Um, we also then infused our standards, our priority standards throughout the video to showcase the work that we're doing. We had all the sites contribute pictures and um to showcase the work and to sort of provide an overview and that's on our 4K website. Um, our goal is equal access to quality 4K experience. Um, and we will continue to utilize site visits for me um and other Hudson staff members to ensure that there is a consistent delivery of instruction from all of our sites. Questions about 4K?
Any question? Heather?
Yeah, so thanks for your I feel like I should know this, but reminding me that the reference to students who are repeating 4K, like hmm, what age is eligible for 4K? And so sometimes is that, are they repeating just because really they're not quite old enough? Or is it more like an assessment was done and we think they benefit from another year? So?
All of the above. So yeah, a student has to be four on September first to start 4K. At some point, we do have guidelines for the students to be able to repeat. If it's a summer birthday, they can repeat at their choice. If it becomes more of a spring or late winter birthday, then we ask that they involve the teacher and the family and we kind of meet and see if that is actually the best decision. So it really has been, most of these have been parent-driven, um, just wanting their child to have that experience. And this year we were pretty accommodating just because um for some of the IDL students that maybe weren't in person. We wanted to provide an opportunity for them to have that face-to-face experience. Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions for Sue? All right. Well, Sue, thanks a lot for heading things up at Holton and the the Community 4K and looking forward to your work at Willow.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have Hudson Prairie. Joe Benkey's here.
All right, I'm Joe Benkey, the principal at Hudson Prairie Elementary. Um, I'd like to start by welcoming uh new board members, Kate and Molly. We got to meet briefly the other night at the the retirement banquet. Obviously this year presented us with a lot of challenges. I'm just going to speak briefly on a few scorecard data points and then discuss our building mantra and really share some staff insight and reflections. Try not to repeat too much of what my colleagues shared there, but um we'll, we'll work through that. So our first, our first real highlight here on our, our scorecard data, Sue shared some achievement data. I'll share some growth data. And so our, our goal was to have fifty percent of our first through fifth grade students meet their fall to spring growth target on the NW EA Reading Map score or test um assessment. And so we ended up with fifty-six point nine percent of our first through fifth grade students who met their fall to spring growth target. And and a lot of that, I think teachers would accredit to the FPC curriculum that that Sue alluded to there a little bit. When you start a year with all the challenges we had and then you tell the staff, we're going to also implement a new reading curriculum on top of that, that that was, that was a bit much right away. And as teachers got comfortable and into that, I think they all realized really quickly what a great resource that was. And we're really excited to continue to work with that. As we work forward next year. Sue touched on that FPC curriculum a little bit. I would like to um give you some feedback from, from staff at Prairie and I'm sure other buildings had the same feeling. They really wanted me to thank the board for that extra time to plan those early Wednesdays, those few days that were worked in through the year. Um, our PLCs, a lot of that was used for prep with the, some of the IDL discussion that I'll, I'll, I'll bring up um in a little bit. But um as a result of that too, um, a lot of extra galvanizing and leaning in and coming together with teams happened because of that. Um, and I just might, wanted to make sure that I mentioned that on their behalf. That came up over and over and over as we reflected towards the end of the year. So I'm glad I get to share that with you. I'm gonna have some feedback. So our, our, our mantra for the year, we opened the year at our first staff meeting with being open-minded, using creativity and staying flexible. We knew we were going to be put in some difficult situations and if we relied on these three concepts and and came back to them, we really involved everything IDL and learning how to be those distance teachers. And you're, you're kind of scared of the unknown. Most people are scared of what you don't know, right? And so as teachers really settled into that and IT was incredibly supportive and and working through all the pieces that went with getting staff trained very quickly to pivot and adjust to what that's going to look like. We started the year with fifty-three permanent distance learners. We ended the year with only nine, meaning as the year went, we saw a big influx of kids coming back. Nineteen out of our twenty-three classroom teachers started the year with, with permanent IDLs. We ended the year with five classrooms having them. And then we saw that big surge in November where we had over seventy kiddos out um at that intermittent learning. And every teacher at some point this year was an IDL online teacher. And so just an incredible learning curve for them. And and then you look at the results on top of that, it's pretty amazing. Um, the work that's been done to connect with kids via um internet and in the classroom. So just a lot of work that went into that. So that was our open-minded focus, how we're going to work through that big obstacle. And then creativity, using creativity. This, this one, I, I regretted putting on our mantra as the year went because we always asked the question, why not? And so you can imagine what teachers, as they got their comfort um zone felt out, would come to my office with, well, why not this? Well, why not that? And so we had to curb that enthusiasm a little bit. Um, very much appreciated, but but uh the, the using creativity really focused around a lot of those virtual opportunities and and like um our student services talked about in their report, the ability to engage um families at IEP meetings virtually or um parent teacher conferences were a great hit virtually. So that there are those silver linings that as you reflect back, the creativity used are, are going to be um opportunities we have going forward to continue a lot of those, a lot of those pieces. Um, and then just, I wish you could have saw what I saw day in and day out, moving in and out of classrooms and how they, how they made the opportunities in front of them work. Um, this, just some really neat things with, with seedings and 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 delivering of, of curriculum, just, just some really interesting things that they may work and and you're going to see continue down the road. When you get into the, the bullet point of being flexible, this was everything to pivot day to day to make things work. Uh, what happens when, you know, a few students in your room have to leave? What happens when your teammate has to, has to leave? How are we going to pivot and be flexible and help each other out and support each other? And and we did a fantastic job of that. I would like to highlight our wellness team on this, um, in being flexible. We, we do a lot of community engagement events at period during the year, like a, like a bowling night and we focus on wellness and and health and wellbeing. Um, and so not being able to have that this year, we really focused on a monthly challenge to families that students and staff and then families could participate on. And then we, we would um have drawings at the end of the month to promote those healthy habits. I mean, we had a huge participation rate in that. Um, and then we ended our year um really highlighting that. And our last day of school was a day of wellness and we had students rotate through seven different stations. Really kind of focusing on and tying back in that theme throughout the year. And so that was a big highlight and I wanted to credit that team for all the work that they did to make that work. And then, and then in ending, in closing, I would really like to thank this, the school board for your dedication to the hard decision-making that happened this past year. That doesn't get overlooked. That's what kept us in, in school. I'm very proud of the way our admin team was able to navigate a lot of those circumstances. And then just most incredibly proud of, of our staff for executing the decisions that, that were made. And our families and our students, I don't think get enough credit for their resiliency and their ability to just be perseverant and and dealt with and and got through. Um, and I don't think anybody anytime soon is gonna, is gonna the thoughts of what's going to happen down the road because of COVID is, is going to be really interesting to see. And I, I think as you look around the area, I don't know if anybody handled it any better. So incredibly proud of, of, of the work that happened this year and feel very proud to be a part of that. And then in, in, in ending, I would like to extend Katie well wishes as well. I don't know if I can see her in red yet. Can you see her in red? I just can't see her wearing red. Um, but I got to work under Katie and then for Katie or with Katie. And so I really appreciate everything that she's, that she's brought um to our district as well. And then my last shout out is to Carrie. She found the word oodles in my report. And so if you're bored later and you want to go back and find that. I told her that's what happens when you take feedback from staff, you're going to end up with cool vocabulary words like oodles. So shout out to you for finding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. And then uh, last but not least, we've got the high school report. Mike?
Well, this is my first uh year-end report and I didn't get the memo in the four minutes. I'll try to keep it under twenty-five. Good. Not teasing. Um, all seriousness, um, I'd just like to echo All seriousness, I'd just like to echo a lot of what my colleagues shared. I mean, just the word proud just comes to mind when I think about everything that transpired over the course of the year. You just reflect back and at times it, now it looks like it felt like a blur. But when you were going through it, it was really a grind. And I think talked to all of the work that Jen Latsy and Jordan and Ryan De La Croix and our admin team did. I mean, and then the support from Erin and, and, and Dave, Andrea and Nick, it's just been incredible. So I, you know, Joe kind of took my word. I was going to use proud as really the word of the day. Because you know, you get through something like this and it's just a collective effort by everyone. And I just was, it just really made me be proud to be a raider. So, and, and you know, equally a strong thank you to the board. I mean, you kept us in person as much as possible. And we all know that that's the best model. And so thank you for, for doing that and getting, and providing us the opportunity to educate in the, in the way we know is best. In terms of goals that we had this year, you know, the first one was going to be communication. We just had to make sure that we communicated well with our families. If I think if we ran into any challenges related to communication, it was, it was the battle of email fatigue for families. You know, they were receiving emails from the district level, their school level, oftentimes teachers. And so we were just really trying to find that delicate balance of providing the, you know, what information is really needed for them? And how frequently can we expect them to, to engage with us? And so that was certainly a challenge, but I thought overall things went very, very well in that regard. A second goal was just the creation of our PLC framework. I, you know, just being new, I needed to get a, a good handle on what, you know, really is a pillar of, of any school. And that is that we have teachers working collectively together and they're working on the right things. And so again, with the help of many, Dave, Ivy, our instructional coaches, we, we put together a pretty strong framework for moving forward in that regard. And then finally, in terms of the management side of things, you know, adding an eighth period for, for a schedule and that will begin in 2020 or 22, 23. Was, it was something I'm really proud of. I, I'm really happy with where we landed on the AV block, moving to the LA system. And so that is well underway. My next, the next component that you'll be able to expect from me is I'll be rolling out a communication plan. First to deliver to our school board. So yeah, understand a little bit of, in more detail about the block and the LA system and how we're going to transition those two items. And then after, after meeting with you, then I'll, we will provide opportunities for students, staff and families to, to learn more, have their questions answered and those kinds of things. And then in terms of our highlights and successes, I mean, there are many of them. I, you think about working through a pandemic and you think about all of the, all of the things that we were able to accomplish. I mean, aside from just being in person, in a broader picture, I just think about our ability to, to still run clubs and so many activities and athletics and our fine arts programs, just really again, relative to our peers, just an absolute success. But if, but to highlight a few things, we, I mean, we actually ran a musical. Congratulations to Andy and Carrie. I mean, they, they pulled that off in less than a month. If you went to any of the spring concerts, what a, what a sight to see, see so much talent there. And, and what I found was interesting is I believe in part due to COVID and because I haven't been here before in the past. You know, we would, they would all congregate outside the front entrance after their performances. And if you were, if you were there, you couldn't help but just feel the positive energy. It was, it was just elation and, and smiles and pictures being taken. And I mean, it's just what we're here for. It was just really cool. So, so, so appreciative and thankful that we had that opportunity. Among other highlights, Carrie Henson, Ashley Blum are, they, they wrote a grant and they're going to be receiving a direct to car, to garment printer for the business area, which is going to be pretty cool. They're going to be able to work together and support the process of printing our own garments from start to finish. So everything from design to marketing, pricing, inventory, all of those kinds of things. So they're real excited about that. And that was a, a very substantial grant that they received. Tom Clad also received a, a grant from the Donaldson Corporation for over $15,000 for the welding shop. We had 13 students, 13 Kelp BC students that earned credit through UWRF and Kelp 1 and 2. So basically going to school with eight college credits earned. We had 102 local scholarships that were awarded to 78 students for, for a value of over $67,000, which again, I mean, those are, these, these are just small things to, to, to highlight and, and be appreciative of. Our Hudson High School had four merit scholars to honor Jonathan Bennett, Ainsley Kennedy, Zoe Queeney and Emma Anderson. You know, very, very high honors. We had 25 other students complete the AP capstone requirement through submitting work to the college board for both AP seminar and AP research. I had an opportunity to personally sit on a number of those presentations and the work those kids do. It is just incredible. They find an area of interest and they really dig in. Honestly, it's very educational. We had 748 students register for AP tests. If you think about that, that's an unbelievable number with over 1,000 AP exams that were taken. Thanks to, thanks to all of you. Again, we were able to host our prom, two, our two proms. A big shout out to Kim Benkey and Katie Murphy. They just did a marvelous job of organizing that. And, and thanks to some of you that were, that were there to help chaperone. We all had a lot of fun. I mean, it wasn't just the kids. It was, it was a good time. So very, very thankful and fortunate to be able to, to host a prom. And, and then finally, there were 95 seniors that were inducted into the National Honor Society. And they completed a, a come, over a combined 5,700 hours of volunteer services through their junior and senior years. That's a lot of volunteerism. So just overall, I look back, it was just a wonderful year, difficult, but very, very rewarding. And, and like I said, the word of the night, it needs to be just how proud we are to be here. So thanks.
Any questions for Principal Ballot? All right.
I don't actually have a question. I have, I just want to say how much I appreciated what you presented and what you shared. Because I really enjoyed looking at the Academy capstone projects. They were super fun. And I thought they're super interesting, timely, innovative, sometimes a little silly. But really, really cool stuff that these kids did. Yeah. So I, the stuff that's going on at the high school is pretty cool. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Right. Thanks for the report, Mike. Congratulations on finishing your first year. All right. All right. Well, that concludes the reports for this month. We have more next month. And just checking with the board, do you want to, should we do a break now? Is this about halfway point of the meeting? So maybe we'll take a five-minute break if we can do that. We'll stand in recess, come back at 7:23. Are we back on? Okay, we are back on. We have superintendent's report.
All right. Cause I know this is going a little too quick for people. So I'm going to try to slow the meeting down a little bit and kind of settle in and. No, I'm kidding. So a couple of things on superintendent's update. So we have the COVID operational update. We're kind of winding down on the COVID operational updates. No real changes over since Matt, you know, a couple of weeks ago. We've had one, we're basically one week into summer schools, slash summer activities. School edge care is the only thing that we've really had going on. And I guess high school, summer school. I can tell you, we've been a week and knock on wood, we haven't had cases from not having masks. And so we'll continue to keep an eye on that. Kind of anticipate we'll have COVID operational updates, maybe the next couple of meetings, and then they'll probably start to subside, you know, as we continue to move forward. But want to make sure that we can kind of give you an update as to what's happening with, with summer school and, and some of our summer programming. End of the year update, had a great, great experience with the, with the banquet, staff appreciation banquet went really well. Andrea and her team did, did a great job with it. And so, you know, definitely now we've become wedding planner type event planners, types of things. But it, it really went well. And, and the crew that put on the mocktails, I don't know if that was Dave's charge or what. But I've never seen so many people drink so many sugary drinks in such a short period of time. I don't know if they were hoping for fermentation to happen sometime or what was, what was going on. But no, it was great. And then graduation was a great event. Went really well. Great, great weather outside. So, you know, great end of the year, you know, all in all, it's been, it's been a good end of the year. Enrollment update. Andrea has it on there. I don't know, Andrea, if you want to touch on that?
Sure. And I linked to the document as well. So specific to elementary primarily because we're still working on some specifics of the middle school, high school numbers as they're rolling up. We haven't yet rolled Skyward over. But you can see with the elementary information that right now we're at 2089 total students projected for next year. That's up about 30 kids from February. So hopefully continue in the right direction. And then with respect to that, corresponding information is the boundary exception. So you guys know, this is our third year of doing the new process for boundary exceptions. And we had 50 requests for boundary exceptions this year, going into 21, 22 school year. Of those 50 requests, we approved 49 of them. So quite a few approvals. Historical information for the 2021 school year, we had 57 requests for 1920 school year, which was the first year that we implemented the new process. We had 90. So we've gone from 90 to 57 to 50. So, and even of those 50, there's been multiple people that have declined. So I think it's become more manageable as we continue to implement it. And so that's great. And then in terms of open enrollment, we currently approved 20 or 65 applications into the district. So we have 36 applications out currently. There's the other enrollment or open enrollment processes that start in July, but this is just the initial open enrollment period. And so that's quite different than the prior year, which for the 2020, 2021 school year, we had 66 applications out and 61 in. So now we flipped it by quite a bit. So I thought you guys would want to know that information as well. But basically a middle school is kind of holding its own with respect to numbers and the high school is as well. The fifth grade going to sixth grade class is 409. So it's like our last 400 plus class for quite some time to come. So unless we have a significant migration going forward. So just wanted to make sure you guys have all that information and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The total elementary number with 99 sections, how does that compare to the previous two years?
I believe we're down a couple hundred students. I don't have the exact number. I could get it one second.
So it looks like we're about 2159, somewhere around there, 2160 in elementary. And we had 102 sections this last year.
Yes, we did. Yep.
And I know that you said we're 30, we're up 30 from the projection in February. But that's still, we were at 99 sections in February and we're still at 99.
We are still at 99 sections. You can see there's a little bit of red as we're continuing to monitor the situation in terms of the red means that we're above class size guidelines. The Holton dilemma is Holton in that you have one red surrounded by green. I mean, it's a lot of under class size guidelines with one outlier at the second grade or at the first grade level. And North Hudson, you kind of have the K1 dilemma where it's the same number of kids. And you can see it's a perfect example of if you're over or you're under, I mean, what it looks like in terms of class sizes. So that's one that we're closely monitoring as well.
Yes.
Excuse me. I think you started by saying this is preliminary or it's right now. Like at what point do we say, and we are making decisions based on today, or have we already reached that point?
We did that back in February. And so we've made our staffing decisions back in February. We continue to monitor it so that if we, like in July, we have 15 move-ins from a new development, then we'll be able to pop up another section if needed. But it's, it's always an ongoing analysis. This is what was important with this particular moment in time is that it triggered the analysis of boundary exceptions and open enrollment placements. So wanting to make sure that we weren't adding three kids to first grade at Holton. That would make it even more out of whack, right? With our class size guidelines. And that if we're able to lessen some of the high ends, that was great. But for the most part, I think you look at Rivercrest and Rock as kind of the examples of, well, Rivercrest is a little lower now because they lost a couple of kids, but last week they were, there was no green. So I guess we had a few go out, but they're kind of consistently within the, the playground in terms of where we want with class size guidelines. And that's what we're, our goal was to keep that. So our application of the rules of open enrollment as well as boundary exceptions are, will go up to one less than the class size guidelines. So if our class size guidelines, 18 to 22, will place kids up to the point of 21 kids in a class. And so that's why this is so important for us when we operationalize those pieces.
So follow-up question, and you called out the, the seemingly odd discrepancy in North Hudson. Is, is that because staffing decisions were made and numbers have changed since then? That we have now two same number enrollments with, with a two and a three, it's changes to enrollment since, since we made decisions about staffing?
Correct. And significant changes. I think they popped five kids in K within a month. Like there was, every time a registration email goes out from the district, then we have a spike in people who sign up. And so that was one of these, we actually, we were just last Friday at 22. So Shannon emailed me over the weekend and said, we're now, we found two more kids. So it does fluctuate quite a bit. And it's hard to lock down some of the numbers until August.
Do we ever in situations like that end up, you know, a North Hudson parent, letting them know we're happy to have you? Just so you know, your kid has a pretty big class and just up the street in Holton, there's a pretty, I mean, do we ever have those conversations with parents?
We haven't necessarily. I mean, the boundary exceptions is part of the information that we provide. I mean, and this is certainly public record if anyone ever wants to see it. I think because busing wouldn't be tied to that movement. And that's what we were trying to get away with some of the district choice pieces because we had three buses going through that one development over by the post office. So our default has been, we'll work within this. But we've had conversations between the K and one at North Hudson of, we want to look at that creative, creatively to see, is it better to have three at K? And two at one, if we're not able to pop it at K. But a lot can change between now and end of August for sure.
Yeah, I'm curious on that. Heather's question is, was what I saw right away is that Holton and North Hudson being right next to each other. Are those kids somebody that's close to the North Hudson boater? But it's kind of reversed for a kindergarten and first grade as to which.
It is odd right there. Those, those two being so close to each other and being the polar opposites of the grades.
Right. But if I was, yeah, if I was a parent that, let's say, you know, at Holton and saw that there'd be you know, 23 or 24 kids in my, in my child's first grade class, but I could send them to North Hudson and they'd only have 15 classmates. So that's a big swing.
We have had principals make those phone calls, right? Especially when it was boundary exceptions that were more, like the first year of implementation was parents were kind of shopping which building they wanted to go to. And when you have that situation, the, the principals will certainly advocate and say, well, our class size, class sizes look like this. If you go to this building, the class sizes look like why? We've been trying to get away from that because every building is fantastic, but it's, it's been a conversation historically.
Right. Okay. Thanks for that update. And Nick, your last part of your report?
I would like to turn over to the distinguished gentleman from CISA 11 over there.
I just had a great time at the CISA 11 annual.
I just had a great time at the CISA 11 annual meeting. And as you know, it gets to be a wild time up there in Turtle Lake. No, it was an interesting meeting, my first time being there. Our board of control for our cluster had no, no changes scheduled. So my vote was not necessarily that important, but it was interesting to see the process they go through. Big news that is on your calendar is next year's 2022 CISA 11 convention will be June 6th. Tim? And takeaway would be much like we're looking forward to getting, you know, back to normalcy. Imagine the CISA office up there in Turtle Lake, when the casino is closed and everything's closed. And, and you, I wasn't aware of how many training sessions they have per year up there at that facility. And the amount of people that come together, educators and specialists is very interesting. When, when I got there, I was, sat down, put my name tag on and was met with a bunch of strange looks. And it turned out they were really hopeful that Rob was going to be there. So I, I was sorry to disappoint, but did my best. So, but they're looking forward to a big rebound here, getting people back in person and, and the services that they do provide for us. So it was interesting and thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Bob? All right.
Do we nominate Carrie for next year then?
Well, so we'll get through this next school year, get into, what was it, April that we nominated you or May? But no, thank you for going there and thanks for your report. All right. Next up, we go into the action items and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with language and regarding expenditures.
I move to move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial, chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,198,169.30.
Second.
All right. Motion by Carrie, second by Bob. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda items are approved. And next up, student policy series, this is first reading. Erin, is adjusting her mic and she's ready to go.
Yep. So these are similar to what you saw at the work session as we talked about in policy 453.3, that was the one we had talked about having a separate policy developed soon for employees. So those changes were made to just reflect students in this one. Other than that, no major changes.
Okay. And in here are a lot of procedure changes. I guess I, I am curious because I saw that on Mike's report that, you know, attendance procedures at the high school. Well, that, is that going to require a change in either a policy or a procedure depending on what comes out of that committee?
No. So what's in the policy is really what's required by state statute and how we follow our truancy procedures. So that won't require changes here, but it may just, it may be differences in how individual schools follow those or create their procedures to follow this policy, if that makes sense.
Well, and these are, there's a lot here in this first reading and, you know, everything from communicable and infectious diseases to dealing with kids with food allergy and dietary needs, which is something we do hear about every once in a while from parents asking questions. Of course, we always refer them to you or the building principal, but so is there a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I'd love to approve the first reading of the student policies as presented.
All right. We have a motion by Heather, second by Carrie. Any further discussion about these policies that, and procedures that go from 431 through 461? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the first reading, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and it's approved first reading. Next up, we have handbooks. We'll take middle school first.
Sure. Middle school handbook is very similar to what you saw at the, the work session. Just some updates made to provide a more clear example or clear description of school counseling program. For an example, updates to dress code, those sorts of things.
Very good. Okay. I'll take a motion for either or both.
Okay.
Middle and high school.
Yeah.
Move to approve the middle and high school handbooks as presented.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Bob. Any questions about, further questions about either handbook? These were discussed again at the work session. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the 2021, 2022 middle and high school handbooks, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it and the handbooks are approved. Next up, we have school based mental health services report. And again, I remind you that these are items for discussion and/or action, but not necessarily both. So.
Yes. This presentation is really just for your information, really focusing on our community mental health provider partnerships where we have different agencies coming into the school or virtually to help support the mental health needs of our students. This is just to kind of help kind of visualize where these services fall within the Wisconsin school mental health framework. This would fall in, in the top of that pyramid where this service is provided for a few, a few students built on the access to service for all, then some, and then a few. So just wanted to kind of keep that at the forefront of our conversations about mental health. So we have community mental health provider partnerships. We have two agencies that we're currently working with, Family Means, who provides services at EP Rock, middle school, high school, and Hudson Prairie. And then Family Therapy Associates were added a couple of years ago through a memorandum of understanding to increase service to all of our buildings. So they serve North Hudson, Holton, Willow River and Rivercrest. So services were provided both onsite and virtually this year. So that students could access it in a way that they were comfortable if they were, if they were IDL students. That didn't mean they couldn't access co-located mental health therapy, which was, which was a nice benefit for students' families as well as the provider. The purpose again of co, if you can go back a slide, having mental health therapy within our buildings is a huge benefit to our students. And we're really prioritizing those students who otherwise have a barrier to accessing mental health therapy. I think we can make a case that many students and families are accessing or are experiencing barriers with wait lists and those sorts of things. But really we're focusing on either uninsured or underinsured students and families and families who have a transportation issue to access mental health therapy. So number of students served this year through co-located, meaning one-on-one mental health therapy through those agencies. So we served about 80 students compared to about 69 students last year. You know, similar to what you heard from the highlights today, there were certainly challenges that we experienced within this as well with maintaining employment of the, of therapists. That's a, you know, highly sought after position and there is definitely a shortage there. So 80 students were really proud of that, of that mark. Co-facilitated mental health group, that's something that's funded through our mental health grant where a mental health therapist co-facilitates a group with either a school social worker or school counselor or special education teacher. And so those exist in every building and kind of rotate six-week programs based on, based on need. So whether it's an anxiety group or a family change group. So that's what that 48 is. Looking forward, we are in conversations to seek additional community partners to provide increased support. I think coming off of COVID, we really need to be talking about how do we set ourselves up proactively to meet the, meet the needs of our students as we transition sort of back to normal. And then with our school counselors and our mental health coordinator have been working hard this year on refining our mental health referral pathway. So that when we do implement our social emotional screener in the fall, we know exactly what actions we're going to take based on that data and not having to kind of wait or help families flounder through that, but it's sort of a clear delineated process.
All right. Questions? I was looking at you, Molly.
I know. You knew that I had a comment about this. I am, I think I've said appreciative all night, but what else could I say? Thankful. The part that our school district is playing in an area where there are so many needs and very few services or the services that we have are so inadequate or they're not timely. And I know that it's not just us, the school district that has to try and help kids. But I appreciate the part that we're playing and I'm really thankful for all these innovative programs that we have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Question about that, Ben? Yes, Heather.
And I would just add appreciation. I know that across the district, there's been a lot of work with staff to try to provide staff, non-counseling staff with more familiarity, familiarity, knowledge and even skills around identifying and supporting kids who have mental health issues. And I feel like as a parent, I'm seeing the benefits of that, that, that staff are really supportive, flexible, understanding, are helping connect with resources. And so I think, I know the district has for many years been making investments in how do we provide a more comprehensive net of support for kids? And I, I appreciate that. And I mean, ultimately the provider shortage is problematic. And, you know, it's, in some ways we're, we're we're doing a better job identifying kids who need help, which makes it even more problematic that the provider shortage is problematic. But I just, I appreciate the investment that, that the district and your department has put into supporting staff across the district in making them feel more able to be this kind of support for our kids.
And when you go back to that pyramid too, it's about strengthening every single level within that. And our classroom teachers play a really important role in kind of that ownership of students and having the skill to just help address some of those needs as well.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge to know where to put the resources. Because when you get out the top of that pyramid, it can be, there can be a few who are really eating up a lot of resources. At the same time, you might be limited in what you can do as far as effectiveness for trying to reach all. So my question is, and I'm sorry I didn't pose this earlier so that you had a chance to prepare, but you know, just the idea of reducing the stigma. I've been to, you know, because of my spouse's occupation, I've been to a few of the seminars about make it okay. And, you know, talking about mental health and so forth. So what are we doing in, you know, particular middle school and high school area where that could make a difference in how the, these resources are utilized.
Yep. So that's something that some of our student-led groups, especially at the high school have taken on is reducing the stigma. And, you know, in a, in a non-COVID year at homecoming, they had a booth at the family event for homecoming to just talk about that. We are also bringing in teen mental health first aid in 10th grade health next year. So that'll be co-taught with a counselor and a health teacher. So every 10th grader who is in health will have access to that. And that's stigma is part of that curriculum as well. So.
And, and, you know, in some ways even as early as fifth grade, because that transition for fifth to sixth grade is really huge for a lot of kids. That's where I think a lot of anxiety issues, you know, come up is when they go from being in the elementary school where they've been for five, six years to then going to that middle school where they're with a lot more kids and everything. So. Yeah, I would hope we can open that up as far as, again, more opportunities for reducing stigma. But I appreciate what's been done already. Any other questions? Okay. Then I guess Dave, this is the last item for discussion of possible action. Well, it's, yeah, I'm sorry, Dave and Tracy. Tracy, all right. Very good, Tracy.
So this is the school start time advisory committee summary and findings that was reported at the work session in May. The first part of this document identifies the charge of the committee. And the committee started their work in December 2019, was paused during COVID and then restarted their work this winter. And what you have here are their findings. And the findings, starting with the research that suggests that adolescents need an estimated nine hours and 20 minutes of sleep each night in order to mitigate the risks that are identified here associated with mental health, self-esteem, emotions, regulating emotions, depression, suicidality and some other risk behaviors. Additionally, based on the research and reports that this group had from other school districts who made changes to their secondary school start times, that sweet spot seems to be that 8:30 to 9:00 AM as a start time. Caution was expressed by schools that did make the change to make sure that we are addressing the needs of families who may be impacted here, particularly with childcare. And also paying attention to activities and how activities may shift. So school districts that made the decision that if they, if they changed the time, that they would not allow activities to just shift to the morning and then take, take up that time and lose some of the impact of that additional sleep. That the committee also recognized that, you know, this is a balance of research benefits and then also the financial impact that this would have for the district. An interesting comment from the majority of the students on the committee expressing, when it came down to looking at the different scenarios and what they supported, actually asking that, or their votes were placed on just leaving things as they currently are. Just to note that, that's, that's about six students who are participating on the committee. And then finally, the committee recommends the following scenarios that are presented here be reviewed with additional costs associated with them so that they're firmer costs. I mean, these are high level costs and impacts. That a survey be created over the summer so that we could the, get information from a larger group of community members and stakeholders. So, I mean, the, the committee ranged during their time between 30 to 60 people. So they felt their response certainly important, but limited in thinking a survey would help the board making a decision moving forward and that based on conversation by the board previously, doing a survey end of September with feedback for the board to make a decision by the end of 2021 in order to do all the planning that's necessary if a change were to be made for the following school year, the 2022, 2023 school year. And then you just have the high level options or scenarios that they presented. These are presented here as identified by the committee. So you're missing scenario four. And that's just because that one wasn't moved forward.
Okay. Questions? I guess one of the questions is going to be, what's the board's preference for moving forward? We have a recommendation from the committee to, you know, put the time, money and effort into a survey and then gauge whether there's broad support for any of these four scenarios. But I am curious. You know, scenario one and scenario three. So scenario one has flipping the start time. and scenario three. So scenario one has flipping the start times and it was chosen to start elementary and 4K at seven 35 and high school at eight 53, middle school would follow 14 minutes later at nine oh seven. In scenario three, the start times are just pushed a little closer together. The elementary starts at eight, high school at nine. In middle school would be the latest at nine 17. And I know that the difference between high school, middle school is so the buses can get, they drop off the high schoolers first and get to the middle school. But I guess my question is, what is the magic in scenario one for seven 35 and
Really the
Eight fifty-three.
So in three, moving elementary to that eight o'clock start time, it's really that seven 30 to eight. So the, the belief or concern that elementary families are going to not necessarily support that seven 35 start time because of the time that kids are getting on the bus in the dark as elementary children versus secondary kids. So it was, it was trying to make that more palatable for the elementary families. There's no magic to it. It's just simply that.
So two questions there. One is in scenario one, there's a 14 minute time difference between high school and middle school bell. In scenario three, there's 17 minute difference. I don't know how consequential three minutes is, but you know, is one more correct than the other? Could we just call it 15 minutes and call it good?
And, and, and that's probably accurate. I mean, the, we did not dig into the actual bus information to a high degree to really, so I mean, that's, that's just, that's just a cursory look at it. How can we potentially make this work? And, and for the purposes of the committee to have their discussion, we just kept it at this more general level.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta start sometime. So
Right, right.
My question would be, and this is, you know, the compromiser in, in my mind, trying to be, come up with a solution that maybe is not optimal for any one group, but just more palatable to more people. And that is seven 45 elementary, eight 45 high school. So that'd be combining the one hour time difference and shaving it down from one hour and 18 minutes, which is scenario one. And it gets our, you know, elementary kids starting a little bit later. So they're not quite as long, you know, in the dark, if you will, in the winter and trying to get the high school kids so they're started a little bit earlier and still will have time for activities before six 30 at night. Yes.
Oops. Just to, to follow up on what you're saying. If you think about how we did the school perception survey around the referendum and trying on some of those questions to find out what that sweet spot is. So we, we did that on the financial impact, but that may be something kind of what you're saying similarly. What, what will elementary parents tolerate? So, I mean, you can word the questions to, to help you identify that.
Okay, very good. And that was just kind of a kickoff. I saw Carrie and then Heather. So.
I would guess those might be dependent on what the bus, bussing situation can provide with the routes.
Right, right.
But I'm sorry, you said the, the committees fluctuated between 35 to 60? And then what was the final number?
Given time as far as attendance. So when we first started the committee, we were close to 60 members. Due to the period of time that it took us to see, we paused, not everybody returned.
Sure. And then for like the final meetings, what, what was that number?
The, the final number as far as people who
That came up with these scenarios. Yeah.
Yep. Probably closer to 40 because it went out. Not everybody attended the final meeting in person. But everybody on the committee had the opportunity to weigh in on the scenarios.
Okay, thank you.
Heather, you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say what, what I'm trying to get my arms around if we're gonna go to the community for feedback is it seems like we're trying, trying to crunch two different questions into each scenario because it seems like there's a question of, are we or aren't we willing to think about spending one to $3 million? Because if we don't stick with that current gap about right between the start times, then we go into bussing impacts. And then it's the sweet spot on like, what's, you know, what, what's the schedule that works best for people if we're gonna, if we are gonna flip, what's the, I mean, so that, that's the thing that I would, that, that, that I worry about with this scenario is it's these two ideas, but they within them have a couple of questions. And so maybe there's a way to design the survey that we do get feedback on both of those. Cause there might be some folks who say, I, I like the research, but no way to spending millions of dollars on more bussing. But there might still be a solution. Do you know what I'm saying? That's the part that I'm kind of trying to wrap my arms around as we think about if we're gonna spend the resource to go out and get feedback. Let's make sure that we get feedback that's really helpful on both of those related questions that, that, that inform this, this issue.
And we talked about that, that we would likely need to have both of those questions answered.
Carrie, did you have another comment?
Uh, yes, I, I guess I would ask before we even think about a survey and posing any questions to ask more specific questions of, of Safeway to see if they would have the capability to support all of these scenarios. And if those costs are accurate. Because even if we were estimating 3.4 million, that may not doubling their fleet or their number of drivers, if that's what was required in one of those scenarios may not be possible.
Sir, well, is, so we haven't gone to Safeway yet with anything because?
Well, we don't know. And other than Steve has been very much a part of this and certainly has been the person providing the bussing information on it.
Right, right. And, and Steve also has been in consultation with Safeway, but you're absolutely right. We don't know the specifics on this. So it's part of this process is finding out how much information we need to dig into that next layer of data to really narrow down the, not only the questions we need to ask, but the information we need to make decisions. And, and you're right, we, this could be, these three scenarios that are being presented could be broken into probably 15 specific with all sorts of permutations. But the question is, the, the question that we're, that the, that the committee was looking for was what's the appetite of the community from a general perspective? I think if you did decide to go to survey, it would be working with the survey company that has a lot of expertise in how to craft these to get the information that's necessary.
Yeah. Cause just as we did with the referendum, I could see the, the need for this survey to have a lot of prefatory information and
Absolutely.
You know, lay out the pros and cons and maybe even have hyperlinks. If people are taking the survey online that they can then click on to get, you know, down into somewhat some of the data and studies that, that were looked at. Yes, Carrie.
Promise this is my last question. Do we need to have any type of commitment that should the start time change for secondary that there would not be activities permitted before school? Or is that something we're open to? While it would defeat the purpose of the whole change?
Well, I guess, yes.
I would agree with Carrie. I think that if that's the whole purpose of the later start time, that that would need to be a stipulation. And I also just wanted to comment. I, I feel like it might be nice to have some of that committee come in as well to do like a Q and A, whether it's for the community or for us or I feel like we're lacking a little bit of information, like what would be the, what would happen with the kids? Is there any study for elementary aged kids about getting up that early and how that might?
The data at that age group, there's, there just hasn't been the focus on that age group. So most of the sleep information research has been on adolescents. But certainly there, there may be some out there, but Erin, you may know more, but I'm.
I think it would be helpful for us to kind of share that information with you, like the research that they did go over because I think if, if the group were here, they would want you to think about the why behind why we formed the committee and the research. And, and I think that's important information to have.
So, yes, Kate.
I just wanna make one more comment because I think it's important for the community to know this surveys are, they're costly. And so I think it's important to really lay out all the concerns and questions before we decide as a group to go to survey.
And Nick, you have an estimate. You, you're typically really good at retaining what those numbers are.
Yeah, I mean, I would say a survey is gonna be 12 to 14,000, somewhere around there, I think is what we spent on the. And again, that was the referendum survey. So that was 2016. So.
And that was like a 16 page?
Yeah, it was a big 16 page survey. I think really what I would tell the board is you don't put anything to survey that you're not willing to live with. So I think that's where, you know, some of the conversation has to happen is, are you, are you willing to live with all three scenarios that are on here? If you're not willing to live with any of these scenarios, then there are certain ones or, you know, whatever they may be, then I think you'd want to make sure that you, you don't put that out on a survey before you put it out there. You know, and the same thing, you know, is, you know, with cost, you guys are gonna have to make a determination on. Are you, are you willing to, are you willing to do that? Because the thing you'll have to keep in mind is, you know, even, even with our surveys and the company will tell you that unless you're surveying about a tax impact to people, the response rate is low. So, you know, we, I think we had close to what 1300, 1400, maybe 1700 surveys we got on the referendum. I had to go back and look. But we sent out 13,000 and they actually thought that was a really high response rate. And, you know, then we asked about what if we surveyed on an annual basis to get community feedback, how we're doing in the school district? And, you know, the honest response we got from the survey company was although we'd love to take your money, you're probably not going to generate a whole lot of information from it unless you're asking people about their taxes and what they're willing, what they're willing to tolerate.
So we're looking at 13,000 surveys.
I think, well, I mean, that in 2016, I think that's what we had. And that's about what we, when we look at every door, direct mail.
It's about 18,000 when mailers, when we send out a mailer.
So, you know, somewhere in there.
Yeah, Carrie, you promised that your last one was the last.
But he brought something up. Even though this isn't necessarily a tax impact, it is to businesses potentially significant impact to their workforce. So that could be important for some respondents.
There, there's absolutely no, no doubt about it. I, I guess that's, you know, the question is, are there, are there other ways you want to get any level of feedback besides, you know, a general survey? Would you like us to try to reach out to the chamber if you're concerned about business groups? Would you like us to, you know?
Would it be cheaper to just survey the parents?
Well, we can survey our parents in-house pretty, pretty easily. I mean, without, without a cost, we've done that before using Google forms. And so, you know, we can, oh, my phone just activated because I said Google. But, you know, I mean, that's, that's something we can.
Could we, yeah, could we do a combined, I mean, not combined, but you know, separate surveys, but still at the same time, do a survey of you know, the parents and then do another one for the Chamber of Commerce so that we get business. So we can have, see what those results are and look at what our participation levels are overall before we do something that's going to cost taxpayers over $10,000.
I mean, we'll, we'll still have to get the info. I would think we'd want to have the information. So we'd still have to do
So we'd still have to
Research.
Yeah, create the survey ourselves.
Yeah, they are in a survey we create ourselves. You know, part of the challenge is to make sure that we're not getting duplications because that's but yes, it's certainly doable. It's just managing who's actually responding.
Cause I would like to see from those two groups, it'd be just interesting to see if they're in the, going in the same direction or if in their opposite direction, number one. And number two, I'd like to see the level of support. Is it overwhelming or is it going to be a 52, 48 situation? But go ahead, Bob. Okay.
We'd also, I would assume want to include our parochial school families in that survey.
Good point. So what, what's the feeling? Would you guys like to see us go with an in-person? And then before we get that survey that would be in-house, if you will, having either the next work session or work session after that, get some report from the committee?
It probably won't be the next work session since that's next Monday.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe July work session, you know, we could potentially look at, you know, yeah, we could potentially look at providing some of that information.
Well, and Mr. President.
Yes.
I, I, I mean, two things that I heard really resonated. One, and I'll paraphrase, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think I heard Carrie say, let's not put out an option that's not even viable. You know, like if the bus company can't deliver on an option, let's not put that out there as, I mean, if, if it's not viable and then let's not put out an option that we as a board couldn't stand behind. And so I feel like for those two things that we as a board have some work to do before we're ready to say, here are the things that we want some feedback on from the community that we have to work through those two questions first. So I feel like that, that's, that's our immediate work, maybe July work session would be to figure out how to get at those two, those two pieces.
Yeah, I would agree with, with Heather on that and Carrie. It's interesting because you know, you want to know what, you want to try and get to the parents. I mean, it's the students that we'd be spending the extra money for any change on. And it's also, you know, to get enough feedback on, is this something our parents and what want? And is this something we want to do for our students? And the money is an investment in their learning, if you can look at it that way, but it's still a significant investment that we may give people in the community, non-parents saying it's okay the way it is and doesn't cost us anymore. Just like it was okay to have a grass field that you can only use twice a week versus field turf. I mean, you can look at it all different ways. I just don't have a clear idea where, you know, the, the concerns will be coming from. Obviously parents and students first, but be, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to have a, I'm having a hard time kind of figuring out in my head where this is gonna go. So. Well, I think something to keep in mind, because there are groups that kind of reference, you know, a calendar survey we did back in 2017, I think. Where we said, would you be interested in the district exploring, looking at this? Not, would you be interested in changing school start times? And, you know, and, and I think there's, there's a big difference between somebody saying, yeah, I'm fine with the exploring it and another saying, yep, I want you to change, change the start times. And so we really haven't, we haven't surveyed parents. I mean, and that can be our first step. And that can be something that we can talk about, you know, prior to July work session. Here's what we think a survey could look like if we were going to survey parents. But, you know, the, the thing is with their, with our bus company, you understand they don't necessarily, I mean, we can use different bus companies. You can use more than one bus company. You can use, you know, there's a variety of different ways to do it. It just, as you bring more players into the equation, things get more and more complicated. As you remember, some of our challenges, we had just a few years ago related to bussing that have ironed themselves out quite nicely. And so, you know, there, so there are definitely things that we can get to is, you know, if all of a sudden Safeway says, nope, we absolutely couldn't handle that, that doesn't necessarily mean that the district can't go that direction. It just means it may not be with that company. You know, they may say, well, we could handle that, but it's gonna take time or, you know, the district say, well, we're gonna split it. You know, into multiple contracts. Cause you know, there are districts, the districts that can tend to do this relatively quickly, especially urban districts. People talk about St. Paul and things like that. They utilize public transportation as well as school transportation when they do these things. So they can, they move a little bit more nimbly because they already have built in bus routes that are going all over their city. And that's not necessarily always the case for us.
Well, I'd just be curious if we're having a hard time finding bus drivers now is doubling the fleet and how we're gonna find bus drivers when there's employers in town who are, you know, offering five bucks an hour more than what we're paying our bus drivers. And they can't get people to apply for those jobs either.
We just need to know how much more effort you want us to put in and what you'd like us to have prior to July from an administrative standpoint.
Okay, Kate.
I would agree. I think we need to. I think we need to do more work in our work sessions to iron some of this out. I don't think we're ready to.
So what would you like to see the administration come back with for our July work session?
I would say to have Safeway come. And to perhaps have a few representatives from this group.
The committee.
The committee.
And then, yes.
As far as so the committees members, you want them, what would you like them to report on?
I guess for me, I'd like to do just a little Q and A, like the research. Where is their passion coming from? You know, there's forty people in the group right now. There's a lot, you know, how many students that we're looking at or how many families that so I'd like to know where where they're coming from.
And I I would like to see a little bit about the information. I'm this is the conclusion of the report, okay, that overall kids need this much sleep and so forth and so on, but you know, there's others that have done this, other districts that have done it. What's the track record of those? Is it like one hundred percent of every school that switched to later start time sees a ten point increase in the ACT? Or what what is it?
There's so it it certainly we have the whole file, so we can share that with the board. There was a panel that Robbinsdale School District put together of twenty city school districts. It was a meeting link that was sent out to we see that, but we didn't send that out again so that you can see what they talked about. But I don't know that any of them at that level would be.
Correct, yeah, we have, we haven't seen any detail that suggested empirical evidence of academic gains necessarily. So that the the problem with this is that we would all love a lot of really detailed conclusive answers. Like if you do this, this is your result. And then we can compare those results to the investment and say, yeah, we think those results are worth this investment. That's what makes this challenging. We're we're not gonna find details like that. So I think giving you all the information, giving you access to that, and then understanding the perspective of the the committee. And it's important to remember too that we didn't, we didn't select members of this committee that had a particular end result in mind or desired, because there are there are a wide variety of perspectives on the committee. So if we do do something where we bring in members, it'd be important to understand their perspective and their standpoint as they're sharing their information.
And I would just reiterate that first point in the findings does tell you what the research has shown. So, you know, it's it's the research primarily shows benefits in the area of mental health.
Bob?
So when we had the boundary exception change, we had we had one speaker basically come and voice questions or voice a background of, I think it was Maria Rudy.
With the boundaries?
Yeah, with the boundaries and they kind of she represented the group, remember? I mean, is it? Redrew boundaries, yeah, I'm sorry. But I mean, that was a large committee and they basically had one representative speak to us. So is that something we could do too? I mean.
Certainly.
I mean, have them say who's gonna speak for us as a group.
Okay, Carrie?
I'm a total liar. Rather than rather than maybe having Safeway come, I have full confidence in Tim and Andrea being able to glean that information from them and report back on. And Steve, yes.
Have Steve here, yeah.
Okay.
No, I think that the subject is important enough and, you know, we've had enough people come to introduce this. And we've put time into this committee. I think it's imperative that as a board, you know, we do our due diligence too before we rush off and either say, no, this is dead in the water or, yeah, we'll try to do a survey that's gonna cost the taxpayers over ten thousand dollars. I mean, there's got to be some middle ground there where we dot our i's and cross our t's. So, yes.
The the other thing to to Bob's point of having one representative, what I think as a board, you'll need to decide is if you want a recommendation from this committee or if you want them to express what they want you to consider as a board. Because there are two very different sorts of reports that they would provide. A recommendation, their recommendation really is this, that they they would like you as a board to explore these concepts in greater detail. So I think what would likely be more effective for you as a board to give you that information is what would what Kate was suggesting, a little more perspective on what brought them to the this conclusion that these are the three areas you'd want to they'd want you to explore. I don't think you're gonna get anything more definitive than that necessarily, because there are a variety of perspectives shared versus the boundary process or redrawing. That was more, these are the things we want you to consider as you're going through that process where there's gonna be a little bit more cohesive sense around. These are the considerations versus this is a recommendation.
Anything else? Any other comments? But I guess we have, we know what's gonna be on the July work session agenda. And we'll take up more conversation at that time. I'll at this time entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the language in the agenda. We have three different bases that are we're going into closed session for.
Mr. President.
Carrie?
Pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E to consider competitive bargaining with the certified union for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C to consider the employment and evaluation data of a certified staff member. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C to consider the employment employee evaluation data of an administrative employee.
All right, motion by Carrie, second by Bob, requires roll call vote. Bowman, Garza, Logan, Powers, Whitaker.
Aye.
Johnson.